May third, two thousand sixteen, at the Senior Center. The first on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. It asks if you'd join us with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Okay, next on the agenda would be the acceptance of minutes from February nine, uh, two thousand sixteen.
I did not attend, so I'm not gonna, um...
I'll make a motion to accept then.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Miss McIntyre for standing?
I am.
I'll declare that to be approved.
Should I abstain? I wasn't here.
It's up to you.
No, I voted yes.
Okay. The record will reflect that. Next on the agenda would be committee reports. The Housing Partnership Committee.
Those both look like my committees.
Ms. McIntyre?
Wow, okay. Um, so Merrill just told me that she had informed me in February that they were, um, still looking into the fact if the housing, um, partnership was dissolved, and they think so, but they're still not quite sure. So, that's, there's no report on that. And I'll do the next one?
They being whom? Who's that?
Lauren, Town Manager's Office.
Okay, can I get you out of the canteen?
Town Manager's Office.
Oh, the Town Manager's Office, okay. All right.
Did you hear me?
I heard you. You're very loud.
I am. I'm extremely loud, um...
So by next meeting, we would have some kind of written communication from the manager or the selectmen stating that whether it's dissolved and not dissolved? There was a selectmen subcommittee, as I recall, an ad hoc committee? Okay.
I hope so.
All right, well, we can always send a, the requests, you know, per this meeting that we would...
We have an email just saying they're looking into it.
They're looking into it, with no particular time. Why don't we send another communication that asks that, honor before our June meeting, that they would provide us with some sort of definitive answer? So we could make the, take the appropriate action prior to our June meeting. Is that okay with you?
That's great.
Does that make sense?
Do I need to make a motion authorize you to send a letter, Mr. Chair?
I don't think you do, but if you want to, it's fine. I think you can make the motion if you like.
Uh, just, just to be on the safe side, I'll make a motion authorize the chair to pen a, pen and send a letter to the Town Manager's Office requesting a status on the housing partnership report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second would be the manager or the selectman, but I think...
Or the select, yeah.
I think that's their committee.
How about, how about to any municipal person or body?
Sounds good, so amended. Still seconded?
Bided.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll get that done. Now, the next committee we have, another selectman, ad hoc, ad, uh, committee would be the Osgood Committee Report.
It's actually called the Osgood?
Oh, Osgood.
Okay.
Okay. Are you on that committee?
I am on that committee. I'm representing the, uh, by the zoning board. So I do have to make up for a couple of meetings that I was, I apologize, I didn't attend February. We didn't meet in...
March or April.
March or April, so...
We didn't have any public hearings.
There was no public hearings.
Right.
But the minutes are on the town website if anyone wanted to view them, 'cause it is a public meeting, it, anyone can attend. And also, anything that's discussed is available for everyone to read as well. So what the committee is comprised of is planning, zoning, conservation, a representative from each. Um, there is, the developer is, um, the owner of the property came one time, and it's mostly represented by their attorney. Uh, and Eric, who is our, I don't, what's his official title?
Eric is the Director of Community and Economic Development.
Okay. So Eric is there as well, running the meetings, uh, and Dick is, uh, and selectmen is representative as well. And, uh, residents are there. So what we're try, trying to discuss and determine for a town on a whole is, what are we gonna do with this property? Are we gonna rezone it, or, you know, so we're looking at the affordable unit, we're looking at the search, we're looking at the traffic impact, uh, we're looking at, actually, Havre, we're looking at the corridor as a whole. We're looking at, you know, what's, how would this town benefit? Unfortunately, um, sometimes the owner's lawyer has a different perspective on what's going to, what should that, what that should be, and his, he focused a lot on the solar panels. And kept on talking about them, talking about them, which kinda was a little tough to see the whole area as a whole, more as the, that project.
But when you say what they're gonna do with it, I mean, there's nothing on the ta, it, it's an industrial zoned property with an overlay district-
Correct.
-that was approved. I mean, the town doesn't own it.
It does not own it.
So the question is, what, what do they wanna bring forward?
Should it be, should the bylaw, um, that specific bylaw for that property, you know, it's zoned for housing here, should it be a lot more mixed? Should it be, um, you know, the, the specific zones of that forty R, should they be mixed? What's the best use of it? What's going on around it? You know, you need to look at all that instead of that one property as well.
Can you amend, is it, is it, can you amend the forty R zoning? Is that permitted?
Um, apparently you can amend any bylaw, uh, if you look at a warrant, any bylaw can be amended. You know, we are looking at the agreement as well, you know, it's, it's...
But the forty R was a state program years ago.
Correct. And I think everyone needs to remember, if that changes, that they, the, the town does lose the money that it was given by the state. So it's, has to be developed within a certain time as well. And it keeps, it keeps on approaching onto that time, the town keeps on submitting a request to, um, renew it, renew it, renew it, and it gets to a point where, okay, you have to give back the six hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. How many years ago was that?
Um, oh geez, I don't remember.
Oh, seven? It was oh seven, right?
It was a while.
Yeah.
It was a bit. Oh, nine. Well, that's the in, impact.
Yeah.
We're looking at traffic over, as well, again, surrounding the areas.
And what's the timetable on that subcommittee? How long is it gonna be going for?
I'm not quite sure.
Is it gonna be like the Housing Partnership Committee?
Yeah, well, they'll let me know when, uh, when it's disbanded. They are inviting me back to these meetings.
And Ms. Jacobs is on there too, right? She's the alternate?
I am. She is, and she's actually gonna, our next meeting is May twelfth at six thirty at the Stevens Estate, and you are gonna join us, hopefully. I will. And everyone, again, is welcome to join.
So what are the, what are owners' ideas?
Solar panels.
That's it?
That's about it, yep.
So the extent of owners' input-
Solar panels.
Into, into this relatively open and hopefully thorough and thoughtful process is solar panels?
Yep.
When the solar panels, if I'm not mistaken, were approved?
Correct, with conditions.
Okay.
Uh, last meeting actually was pretty good, but they, they were not discussed. It was, it was, you know...
So you, were you able to get to some planning concepts at this, at the second meeting?
Um, you know, I, I think they were more open to, instead of having houses in that one area, you know, just kinda like they're gonna try to do, um, in Linfield, you know, the housing, the, the mix, more of a mixed area, but they're, the, the site does have some restrictions.
But it's all conceptual in the context-
Correct.
In the context that, there's, there's the zoning overlay district the town meeting approved.
Mm-hmm.
But-
And just like, maybe, uh, change some of those lines?
They rent office space, but, but in, in the context of, there's no, there's no filing of a plan or a proposal. This is just how to amend the zoning?
No, it's actually to look at the project as a whole, look at the area as a whole, look at all the zoning there, look at, you know, the search.
But there is no project, right? There's no, there's no filing.
There's no, nothing in the works for any of that area. There's nothing, it's just, um, rental of space.
Yeah.
No one, they, they haven't, they're having a hard time with, uh, developers coming in to do the housing. They, um, I don't know why.
Are they thinking about ripping down any part of the system?
Nope. Solar panels.
Okay, well, I'm sure people can try to live in solar panels.
Yes.
What, Ellen, i- i- is it possible for you to identify with any level of specificity what the, what condition is a problem for the owner on the solar, regarding the solar panels?
I don't, I, I don't know. I, I kinda blocked it out when he, when he spouted off on it, so it was just kinda, it was kinda a little unprofessional in my eyes, but...
Who's owner's attorney in this regard?
Attorney, uh, Rosen.
Okay.
Wouldn't the answer to that be the economy?
Yeah, I mean, economy is a big, is a big huge factor in this development.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the answer to your question be the economy?
You know, because they did have those housings in there, they had, um, Avalon come, Avalon was signed, sealed, delivered, and in the last minute, they, they backed out. You know, we talked about, again, the train station.
That was, that was appealed, right, the solar, there was an appeal, the planning board, did they have a planning board appeal?
I think so, yes.
Wasn't that decision appealed?
There was more than one, more than one residential developer came to the altar and left.
The conditions, yes. Correct. You know, we're trying to identify how, um, they can make it a little more marketable, um. So, next meeting we were discussing, I think they, you sent me, um, a market, um, what did you send me? It was a market cer, analysis of, of the area, of surrounding areas, and, um, it's done by realtors, I think it was.
And what, uh, forgive me, because it's kind of a, you know, it's, it's in the middle of kinda nowhere, so when you talk about the area,
Correct.
how far does the area extend for some, for an analysis like that?
Um, I honestly have to say I haven't looked at it. Merrill sent it to me, um, last, last week, and I haven't opened it. 'Cause my meeting's not until May twelfth, so I don't prepare till May twelfth.
Old habits die hard.
So I haven't looked at it. But it's just, it's an analysis done that is no cost to the town. It's done by the realtors who meet and they have their conference, so it's, it's actually statistics, it's a whole bunch of information, my understanding. I will send it to you if you'd like to look at it.
All right, sure. More's the better.
Again, and anyone's welcome, May twelfth, Stevens Estate. It's pretty creepy in there.
I love that place.
Stevens Estate.
I mean, it's six thirty, you said, Ellen?
Yeah. Six thirty, we don't go any later till eight thir, eight thirty, 'cause then it gets dark and it gets a little creepier.
All right, thanks.
I'll bring my flashlight.
Sounds good.
That's it.
All right, that's a good report, thanks. Um, next on the agenda is a request for a hearing for a variance. Um, we can open a public hearing, there's a petition, a notice as it relates to Stephen Morris, right? Stephen Morris is here. He's represented by...
Jared Scarpese.
Jared Scarpese.
Shall I read the notice, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Senior Center at one twenty R Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, May third, at seven thirty PM to all parties interested in the petition of one Peter Street for the property address, uh, for ends map twenty-four, parcel sixty-two, North Andover, Massachusetts, oh one eight four five, in the R four zoning district. The petitioner, the petitioner is requesting variances from table two of the zoning bylaws, dimensional requirements, ten feet front, the requirement's thirty feet, one and a half feet left, the requirement's fifteen feet, ten feet rear, the requirement is thirty feet. Application supporting materials are available for review at the office's zoning department located at sixteen hundred Osgood Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours eight to four, Tuesday from the hours eight to five thirty, and Friday from eight to eleven thirty. By order of the Board of Appeals, Albert P. Manzi, the third Esquire, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm sorry, your name again, sir?
Jared Scarpese.
Jared, okay, did you, you filed a, an appearance letter?
Oh, no.
Not, not now, but it's, um, just at some point. Uh, okay, she, welcome. The, uh, floor is yours. Nice to see you, sir.
Nice to see you. Um, I guess I'm taking a ranch, and I wanna add a second floor to what turned into a cave and add two carriages.
Okay.
That's it?
Uh, no, so I, as, as you can see, I mean, you can better explain to me that obviously the, uh, the direction of what he wants to do, but as you can see, uh, from what was in the camp, but the red outlines, um, I don't know if you read that one.
I have a plan, yeah.
That one right there that you're looking at, that one pretty much better describes the entire structure, so you can see from the first picture there, he has a ranch, he's looking to go upward on that, the second floor, he's looking to build a garage off unto the right, and then you can see the driveway coming in from the Tuitt Street right there. As you were saying before, obviously, all the proposed marks are gonna be obviously lower than the required setback of thirty feet.
I have to say, this is the propos, your proposed plan. It shows the red?
Yep, that, that, that's the proposed plan, the red, yep, that's the additions, yep.
It's one of the first plans I've seen in a long time that actually has the red on it.
It's probably helpful to, actually, you guys are meant to be-
It's almost like you read the rules.
Exactly.
There's always one somewhere.
I'm serious. It's, it's very helpful to see exactly what's there and, okay.
So maybe I'm missing something. Is there a difference between the red thick solid and the red dash?
The red, the red dashes is just going up?
Up.
Yep, or the red solid is a new structure? Like I was saying before, um, there's three neighbors that are sitting behind us, um, we spoke with all of them this evening. I mean, the biggest concern was this, this woman right here, she is, her property's at, if you can see, is at ten Katuitt there, right behind the garage right there.
Okay.
Um, her biggest concern is that she thought she was gonna have eighteen inches between the structure and her, uh, property line.
Well, it's confusing. You know what, the, the, the request for relief can be confusing.
Oh, absolutely can.
You know what we'll do? Let's go through your application and, and what's driving your variance and your proposal. And then what we do is we'll give everybody, if you want us, a chance to talk as well if they want to.
Absolutely.
Right behind others, if you're here, and, um, if we can cover any issues that they may have. I think it's great that you spoke, because it always helps ahead of time, you know, mitigate whatever questions or concerns there might be. And, you know, the notice, the notices are hard to, to understand, especially when they're talking about the, the West of variance, which is really-
Yeah, yeah.
-a reduction.
I mean, just by showing them this plan, you know, I mean, ten minutes before the meeting, they all were like, oh, okay, now we completely understand.
Okay, well, that's great. So, so you know what? We're gonna let Miss McIntyre get you in a second.
That, that's all right.
So I just wanna see if, just to try to get ahead of her, you have a corner lot here, so the red is your proposal. So you, you wanted, you want to maintain twenty point three, we already have an existing twenty on one side, thirteen point five to that garage. And then you're proposing your twenties with the new garage, right?
Mm-hmm.
In the corner of the addition.
Yep, from the, the neighbor there at Tenduitt.
All right, I mean, so, I can, I can tell you have, you have a corner lot, can you tell me a little bit more about the topography of the lot and how it's configured?
Just the, just the description of the lot, the cor, just right here, just that, they want an explanation, what's, you can explain pretty much to what they, just the description of it, what's there right now?
Oh, uh, there's grass, uh, there's grass currently from the corner, that corner lot to, to the garage.
Yeah.
It's a grassed area.
So is it sort of a, is it sloped?
Uh, there's, there's, um, a, uh, there's a, a small wall that comes out probably, probably about ten feet, ten feet or so.
Sure.
And it's probably maybe a couple, two feet high.
So I, I, I think, just not to perhaps drive a, a little bit more, make it a little, little clearer, um, variance requests are, are generally need to be made under some air of hardship, and I think what Mr. Chair is trying to drive at is, you know, can we identify what the hardship is, you know, generally, you know, soil-shaped topography, and topography is what the chair is exploring right now, so if there, there's swales or slopes or something, that would be helpful to know about.
Uh, well, uh, probably the only hard, well, there's a, the hardship case comes the front of the property. The, uh, the state, uh, took a piece of the property away.
Yeah, the front, if you look at the front there, the, uh, the existing property line, all the way to the corner there?
Oh, yeah.
That's taken, and, and I think if that wasn't taken right there by the state, obviously, he probably would've went out toward that way instead, instead of obviously having to minimalize his situation and go back towards the right-hand corner.
Geez, looks like they got a good chunk, huh?
Yeah, it's around forty-five feet.
Can they do that? That much? Yeah.
Yep.
They can do anything.
The rea, the reason, if you look back at the registry of deeds, the reason that they took it, it, it looks like it's, it was taken quite a few years ago, it's just that, at the corner right there, it looks like that they obviously wanted to put in some sidewalk as well as to prevent the, obviously, the property from being variance out towards that way, which could obviously cause problems.
Is that part of your deed too? Is that in the...
That is, yep, that's included in it, yeah, you'll look at, if you look at the last six, uh, grantors and grantees deeds, it was all in there.
Is that why you, um...
That's pretty much why, one of the reasons why he obviously is going back towards that way, the main reason, I should say, 'cause if it wasn't taken by the state, he'd try to obviously go the front that way.
Is that why you have to put the garage that way like that?
Exactly.
You could eliminate that little bump out and put the garage straight there.
I think he, that, that bump out right now is a porch, he wants to keep that, it's almost like a sunroom.
But you have a porch in the back, so... I, I'm just curious why you have that shape of the garage like that, I, I mean, 'cause if you put it straight, you would eliminate, alleviate some of the side.
I think the biggest concern is he wants to keep, see the existing driveway right there at the Tuitt. How you pull in like that, that's how it, you'd go to almost like an underground garage right there, right off the side.
That's causing a lot of your variances, that, in the, um, look, Doc.
Is the property occupied now?
Yes, it is.
So how much is, is, what's your existing floor size now, you, um, Swifty?
Uh, it's a thousand, thousand fifty.
And you're increasing to?
To, um, sweet.
You know, I'm asking.
What's your proposal, is it ten thousand three eighty-one? That's what you're proposing? That's the existing?
Yeah.
And you're proposing?
Not including the garage, if garage is not there.
Yeah, no, it's in the package right there.
Not that I'm married, but do, do you folks live there? Are you the occupant?
Yes.
Are you increasing more than twenty-five percent?
Y- yeah, yes.
So your plans, if I just might ask, um, apart from the survey, oops, is there an architect that...
Uh, Anthony DiDio.
Okay, but he didn't stamp them, they're not, the plan's not stamped. They're just kind of sketches? Is this your final plan?
No, no, it's not the fin, it, well...
I mean, I think-
He, he's gonna have full detailed plans submitted to the building inspector.
Right, so that's kinda what we need to see too. I mean, we would need to see the height, you know, the certification as it relates to the height. You know, because when we grant the variance, we need to know that, kinda need to look at what you're doing. Um, they're nice-looking plans, if I may say that initially.
Do you, okay, you have the, you're not here, right?
Yeah, that's, and I don't see, you know, the elevations. And so, did, did they do, did he figure out the, the elevation?
The elevation?
The increase of your square foot, let me turn that, figure that out.
Oh, yeah, okay, so it would be, it would be twelve feet from the, the original, the original house right now.
Mm-hmm.
That's what he's proposing for an elevation on that side.
So I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot, 'cause I could think that there were stamped with the elevations.
Just stamped plans, yep.
So, you know, that's certainly something that-
They have to, yeah.
Historically, this board has needed to rely on, because we would have to reference the plans-
Exactly.
-in a decision-
Mm-hmm.
-to the extent it was approved.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we'd have to rely on what those, um...
Dimensions were.
Yeah, right, so... But, you know, I mean, I think in the context of where we are, you know, we could certainly have a general discussion initially around this, this side side.
Is the garage higher in height than the house?
No.
No, it's gonna be the same.
I believe you, we just don't have a plan.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It, it's gonna be the same, they're both the same, they're both around twelve feet, twelve point four.
Okay. Um, and I think to Miss McIntyre's question would be this, the square foot calculation, we, you know, we do have a bylaw that talks about, what is it, increasing more than twenty-five percent? I don't know if it was-
I'm trying to find it, I can't, I, I took out my glasses, so...
It wasn't picked up, though, on the, um... Maybe it doesn't apply.
Twen, twenty-five percent, yeah, it does constitute more than twenty percent of the ground, the ground floor of the building, it's, uh, three A, uh, four point one, four point one point three A.
Right, which is zoning district?
R four.
R four, R four, yeah.
All right. You know, not that that's not ultimately curable.
Mm-hmm.
But if that is...
Obviously, that's another issue that has to be addressed, yeah, if it's gonna be more than the twenty-five percent allotted.
We would want, we, you, you would wanna pick that up in the context of a public hearing.
Exactly.
If it need, if it needs to be addressed.
Addressed, yep.
Right now, we're just addressing the dimensional variances.
Dimensional variances, yep.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a thing? Any questions or comments, just generally at this point, or we can open it up to the abutters?
I don't think I have any questions, Mr. Chair.
All right, so I, I know there's some abutters here, um, is there anybody that would like to just be heard on the project for or against?
Hi, I'm Lauren Canellis, I live at number ten Katuitt, right next door, so my, the front of my house is on Katuitt, the side of my house faces on the side of the property. Um, just, I want to just stay-
I'm sorry, uh, so, you, you face the new garage?
I will be, the side of my house will be facing the angled garage.
Ten Katuitt?
Ten Katuitt.
Okay.
Okay, so just, I received a cert, this, um, notice in my mailbox, I never signed for it, it was just placed in, somebody took the card off, which I find odd.
Oh.
Um, just FYI, this was, um...
Let me just, one point at a time. Did they go out certified mail return receipt requested?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, we got a green card back? Do we have?
I don't know if I have a green card yet.
Oh, okay, so usually, usually we have the green card, so we can check. You're here, so that constitutes notice.
Yeah, I only said- Yes.
So that's good.
Yes, it is a good thing, I just wanted, I didn't sign for it, and I am here, I was in the hospital for three days, so I don't know what happened with this, so that's just, um...
We can check the green card and see who signed for it.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, and I just, a couple of questions I had was somewhat answered.
Could you, is it possible, could you guys make room so she could, you might have just a microphone, because it'll be a little...
Pressure's on now.
Do I really have to, I have to take one?
No, you don't really, no, no.
I don't really need a microphone, really.
Do you want a mic?
I'm okay, actually, rather just not give up and down.
This is, this is a little key to the mission, quickly, there's an L.
What was it delivered?
Delivery date is four twenty-eight sixty.
You were in the hospital, weren't you?
I did, I, I, I didn't pick it up, I didn't sign for it, so...
I'm not assuming that you did.
That's okay.
I'm telling you, we gotta kind of...
Thank you, thank you. So I just wanted to know if the elevation of the garage is going to be the same as the house, because as I'm looking out now, I'll be looking at, um, 'cause I won't be looking right out to the street anymore, I'll be looking at the garage, which Steve just, just mentioned before the meeting, will now be angled.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think they determined that it would be twenty feet from my fence.
Correct.
That's what this plan shows.
Twenty feet from the fence, which I didn't quite understand with this, it, it was a little confusing, 'cause I thought it was gonna be one point five feet, which was some concern.
Yeah, I heard that.
A little too...
That would be concerning to me as well.
Yes.
So this is currently a driveway, right? You, you currently use this as a driveway?
Yes.
Okay. So, yes, you want to, you want, you want verification of that elevation?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then if the, the other thing I was just thinking is, if the, uh, where the stone wall is, and there's a little stone wall to the left of the, um, sun porch, and if that slope was gonna change, or am I gonna be ending up with like water? I don't know if anybody's been to Katuitt. I don't know if anybody's been to Contuitt, but as you run down to it, we have a wa, a, a bunch of water that comes down during heavy rainstorms, I have a sump hump in my, in my driveway.
My recollection is it's somewhat sloped, right, the road?
It is sloped, yes, and I didn't know if there was gonna be any more of a slope, or if I was gonna be getting, just thinking about runoff, that's all.
Well, I mean, I think those are good questions, and, and we certainly would have gotten to them, because the plan doesn't really address the elevation, so, you know, we, we can make a little bit more of an inquiry, because we're worried there's gonna be some earthwork, and, you know, runoff, and how they're addressing like, uh, stormwater from the house, you know, is something that could be addressed, you know, you guys could just tell us if there's gonna be gutters, or, you know, what you're doing in terms of that landscaping, so there's a stone wall that divides your fence, but?
As, as it goes into the driveway, so as it goes into the driveway, there's a stone wall there, so I didn't know if that was gonna change the slope of the, um, you know, the side of the house, because I just was concerned that I might be getting the runoff and water, that's the only thing I just like to make sure.
So the slope won't be changed, that won't be changing at all.
Okay.
Um, the house and the garage will be the same, the same heights, if you're looking out from your window there. Uh, in regards to, I mean, obviously, I'm assuming that you're gonna put gutters and whatnot on the garage and things of that nature, so there won't be any, it probably, I mean, from what I've seen and what I've been told, you won't, the drainage won't affect you, like you're saying, drastically, where you're, you're gonna have to, you get more water.
If fairness to our question counsel, you're not doing the work, right?
No, no, no.
So we have to get someone that can.
Yeah, we'd have to get, obviously, his contractor to come in and do this.
Someone has to provide us with a little bit more detailed plan, just, you know, because I think those are the issues.
Those are good, oh yeah, absolutely, especially with building, you know, I mean, another structure on the property.
Right, so, and what is gonna go down hell?
Yeah, you said there's a fence, does it divide both the properties?
Yes.
Like the whole? Okay.
And just at a glance, Mr. Chair, we appear to be approximately, but probably not quite doubling the amount of impervious surface.
Right.
Extending, extending roofline, so runoff, you, you've come to the right place, if, there's, there's a stormwater question in neighbors, Mr. Chair is one of the most, more detailed guys when it comes to exploring that and ensuring that there's not an adverse, a material adverse effect.
Yeah, I mean, the water's gonna go somewhere, you know, I mean.
All water finds a level ground.
It sure does, and, you know, in the context of what you're doing, usually it's something that's very easily mitigated, I don't think we've been looking for anything too heavy, you know, but, and, and just, just what the plan is.
Exactly.
Because after the fact, if you're on the other side, even the best laid intentions, you know, if you start your project and the project's over and your basement's getting flooded, nobody's happy. And they're all yelling at us. How could you let that happen? So, you know, those are, we just wanna try to figure that out, but it doesn't seem like it's anything insurmountable.
No.
But you're right, I do like the stormwater aspects of.
Rightly so, with North End over the water tables being what they are.
Oh, sure. And that's it, and was the height, the, the other issue was the height of the garage, right?
Yes, yes, he said that.
Okay, we covered that. So that's the side that's, that's requesting a ten-foot waiver of the thirty-foot setback, right?
Yep, yes, correct.
So that, that structure will be getting ten feet closer than it could by right. Okay, what else? Pay fees, was, was there anything we could address for you, nothing? Okay.
These are neighbors, I assume?
Yeah, so, so you're at Seven Peters Street, right?
They're Seven Peters, yeah.
Oh, they're on the other side?
You're on the other side, okay, but how, just for discussion purposes, how does it slope that, in that direction, are you guys below her?
Well, our yards are separated by like a foot and a half, two foot tall stone wall on the property line, so it's like a grade, it's a drop off, there's no way to slope at all.
Is your grade higher or lower?
Highest is low.
Lower.
Low, but, um, Alan, the, the construction that they're looking to do doesn't really seem to affect that side of the house where it was really concerned as far as the seven feet, which we're asking. There doesn't seem to be much modification on that side of the property, it seems to be more to Contuitt, so.
Yeah.
I don't really think it's an issue that, yeah.
Okay.
That's helpful.
That's helpful, I mean, it, it does look like, if you are lower, I mean, I'll just throw this out there, if they are lower, and you guys are still extending forward in, in terms of all the roof water, you know, I mean, I think we would just.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, if they were higher, I wouldn't be as concerned.
No, no, completely.
But, um, all right. What else?
I think I'd ask if, if we're going with plans, what's, what's routinely helpful whenever we get to topographical stuff, and I, I don't know that, I, I'm not certainly asking for a topographical study, but if you could bring a couple of snapshots perhaps, showing us what the, what the, the lot looks like, nothing fancy, your phone, phone pictures is, is fine, I'm not asking for a photographer. Those, those work too.
Well, you know, that's, we'll wait till the next hearing, because, you know, we'll take them in paper form, so we could, if someone wants to submit it in paper form, then everybody can, can be looking at it, I couldn't, I couldn't take the map electronically, even if I wanted to, I like paper. But, I, yeah, I think that's a great point, because the pictures are very helpful for us.
Oh, absolutely.
But in, in the context of the plan, I think whatever you would submit to the building inspector for his analysis, for the purposes of getting a permit, you know, the structure, its design, its height. Was that part of the package?
Denny seems to have just manufactured whatever he's got.
Where do these go? Well, I'll tell you what, I'm not gonna put things in the records.
No, I don't think it was submitted, that was just a, just an added glance, helpful Denny kind of stuff.
I'll, I'll let you guys, yeah. Yeah, very helpful.
Oh, I think.
What? Was it in the package?
It sounded like he was taking credit for it.
It was in the packet, right, was this in the?
It's part of the Google GIS packet.
Is it in my packet?
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it in my packet.
It's in North Reading on the website, it's the zoning GIS map picture that the building inspector.
Okay, but my question is.
I think there's, there's some intentional misuse of packet over here, I, I think we're having, having a little bit of fun, it was, it was not in the packet that we got pre-meeting.
Oh, no, okay. Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna look at this till they look at this, we're gonna do this the right way.
Or we could just leave it till next time, rather than, rather than get all dizzy and.
I'm not getting dizzy, I just don't wanna go look at something that you either didn't submit.
Just, Mel, you got any dream with me? Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't part of the package, yeah.
See if it's helpful or not, I mean, it's just, in the electronic age, things are.
That's a good point for next time, because like you were saying, is that, I mean, you can now see from here view.
Very nice aerial picture.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But, but what Paul likes, and they are very helpful, is the front side shots.
Yeah, and that's a gentleman in the back, he had a, he had a Google street view kind of thing, which will give us.
Oh, Alan.
Yeah, I just, you know, I like everything to be fair, if we're looking at something, you should be looking at it too, or you submit it to somebody else, you know, just go into the record.
I'm actually kind of seeing some inconsistencies on your variance and what you're looking for, because you, 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 you think I can see that? Because the way the lot is in the back, so your natural back isn't at, uh, ten Contuitt Street, your natural back is the, the closest point.
Yeah.
So it's that proposed thirteen point five?
So that, so that right there, yeah, so that proposed thirteen point five, that would be the corner right there going almost in the, to a left diagonal out towards that way, out towards the nine Brewster Street.
So, and, and you, just the numbers are off, I mean, I see fifteen, then I see, uh, I, again, I can't see, I forgot my glasses at home, I totally apologize.
So if you're starting from Contuitt Street going, uh, counterclockwise, you'll see fifteen, then you'll see a driveway, then you'll see proposed at two twenties, looking back at ten, and then now you'll see a thirteen point five, there's a garage on nine Brewster right there, that's that, that's the point right there from.
Right, that, that's what I'm questioning, do you call that the side, call that the back?
That's, I think that's the side.
I, I, I would call, I would call it.
They're calling it the side.
I would call it the side, yeah.
It's coming, you, you, you know, I mean.
Cause, cause the struc, I mean, it's a side, because it, it, the, the back would be from the twenty point three, and then it would be right to the back of that existing garage on Seven Peters, that would be the back, and that existing garage at nine Brewster would be the side.
So what would be the difference, it would be, you see, there's gonna be more of a variance, um, if it was the back?
I just want the numbers to jive up what you planned, is what I'm saying, and, so, I don't know if that's the actual technical side, or if it's that, if that's the back.
Yeah, I.
You know, if this man had.
It could go either way.
Backside?
If this man had a perfect lot that was squared off, and that garage wasn't there, there'd be no problem.
Oh, absolutely.
Correct.
Okay, however, this man has the unfortunate luck to have some screwy lot, where somebody put a garage there before they subdivided the thing, okay? So why punish the man because of some guy put a garage there and they decided to draw the lot lines all over the place?
Alan, it's not, I'm not punishing, it's not so much I'm punishing, I want the numbers to be correct, I mean, he has to come back anyway.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So when you come back, okay, I need seven feet relief, I need seven point three feet relief, I want those numbers to match up with what you're asking.
I understand, but if he squared off the lot.
Correct, but the lot isn't squared, that's not what you're looking at.
But it's not squared, that's correct, because there's some freak of nature, because the guy has a garage.
I don't know if it's a freak of nature, but, it is a garage.
It could be a shed, or, or whatever it is.
But you know what, the numbers, the numbers do have to be accurate, because that's all we have.
It ha, it has nothing to do with, with, um, putting them through the wringer, or whatever you wanna refer to, it's having the numbers match up, so when this goes, and if it gets passed or if it doesn't, when it goes to, when he does put it in for a deed, it's proper.
To yours, to your credit, Alan, I mean, I think that jog and what Alan's talking on probably bolsters his position for the need for the variance.
Absolutely.
Because it's not square.
Because it's not square.
But we do need the numbers to make sure that that's either a, a side or a rear, I mean, I, I really, I'd say it's a corner.
I mean, we, we don't have a box for that.
You know.
I mean, if, if, like you said, if, if it wasn't that proposed, uh, property line right there wasn't, you know, I mean, at such a weird angle, I would say, you know what, it's the side. But, I guess you could call it side back, I mean, that, that's.
I don't think that's about around.
No, vocab, yeah.
It's just clarification on.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Our enforcement officer thinks it's a side, right, because that's what he wrote on the duty of relief thing.
Yes, correct.
And I think we need to make sure that those are the right dimensional numbers, so, so on here, that's the one point five feet? From this, from that corner, is that the deal?
Correct.
But the other one is a twenty point three?
Thirteen point five, yep, the other one's twenty point three.
Twenty point three, yeah, a side. And your front should be proposed nineteen point five, not the twenty on the, on the plan, I think, is it nineteen point five?
Nineteen point five, correct.
Yeah, on your, on your, you have a little block here proposed, I think you have twenty? On, on this?
No, nineteen point five is the existing.
No, nineteen point five is the exist, existing.
So you're, that's actually.
But you're not changing that?
No, correct.
No.
So.
So that's remaining, so the red is the second floor.
The red, yeah, the, the, uh, the dash marks, that's the second floor up.
We got, we got this, it's a non-conforming lot, so you have to, it's proposed, if you wanna make it conform.
Oh, I see, okay.
So you might wanna change that at nineteen point five, just the consistencies in what you're asking for.
Correct, yeah.
And clarification on what is actually the back.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Have we hit them with enough for tonight?
So, and the reason why, there's a reason why I'm doing this.
Oh, yeah.
It's not to aggravate you or aggravate the applicant, it's when you come back, I don't want you to have to come back.
No, no, exactly.
I don't wanna see you guys again, not that I don't wanna see you again.
No, you have to do your due diligence because of the fact that you don't want people.
There was a project years ago, that, you know, didn't get followed up the way it should have, you know, and, you know, so we have to be.
Yeah. Oh, I, you, trust me, in today's day, in age, I, completely.
Because before you know it, someone's gonna whip out, take on a Google.
Yeah.
Diagnose, Mr. Zoning Board, how did, how could you guys approve this?
Yeah. We'll be retired by then.
Okay, some of us won't.
Well, the thing is, the thing is too, is that you, you kinda have to pick and choose in these instances, you can't have everybody coming down here asking for a variance, you know, you need to put up certain things, I mean, and the whole entire town's gonna ask for a variance to put up, I mean, structures in the property, you just can't, it can't happen.
They're actually entitled to.
They are entitled to, they are entitled to, no, correct.
And again, like you said, we do have to do our due diligence, because we are also residents of this town, and when you drive by something, you're like.
Correct. I let that go.
What? You know, I, I don't, I've done it probably once in twenty years, and I went, what was I thinking?
Yeah.
And it's still to this day, it's a thorn in my side, it's when I was in the beginning of my term, so it's like.
Oh, absolutely.
The literal enforcement of the law, which will create hardships.
Correct.
Like in this case, particularly with the taking and the way the law is, so, you know, I mean, I, I understand where you need is, but you do have to follow up on the square footage.
Absolutely.
And get a finding, you know, you gotta, you gotta go see the building inspector.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, okay.
All right, because, when, when does that, we have two meetings in June, right? We're supposed to have two meetings in June, and then, then, then in July, right?
One. June, June twenty eighth, and then August ninth are next two meetings. So none in July, right?
So we double it up in July, early July.
No, we did last year, because we were forced to.
Oh.
Some of us were.
Yeah, all right, so what, June eleventh?
June twenty eighth.
June twenty eighth, yeah, so, um, well, where, where I was going with it, we thought we had two meetings, where I was going at is, you'd have two meetings to get it.
Completely.
Straightened out before July, because typically we don't meet in July, then we meet in August, so as of right now, we only have one meeting. Whether we can, whether there's a second meeting, there isn't one right now, so. Um, all right. Anything else on this? When's the June meeting, did you say?
Twenty eighth.
Oh.
Well, maybe we should.
That's deep.
We have one, sorry, there's a one.
Yeah, we should, we should have, we should have had an early G, we should have, I don't know how I missed this, because.
I'm just realizing it's not the second Tuesday of the month.
Right, we should have scheduled in early June, late June, no, July, I mean, that, I missed. All right, well, that's the meeting schedule for now.
Gotcha.
Can't change that, unless you guys wanna add one tonight.
We'll just have to get it right on June twenty eighth.
I'll be away for some of June, so. But you're certainly welcome to me, I realize that you guys go on without me.
Well, I'll tell you, well, why don't we do this, um.
Doesn't that sure maybe lead to me too?
Why don't we?
Doesn't expire until the end of June though, right? Up to June twenty.
Put it on the June agenda, but with, with the caveat, if you're gonna make a motion, with the caveat that, uh, if we, if we do schedule an earlier meeting, we'll put it on that earlier document as well, if we do.
Fourteenth.
But here's the thing, if you're over twenty-five percent, you'd have to re-advertise.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you need the building inspector to make that final.
To make that final, oh, yeah.
Yeah, and then you have to do the whole thing, um, or, is it?
Do we, is the building inspector still there?
He's per diem.
He's per diem.
I know that the, uh, spoke to the building inspector prior to us coming tonight.
Well, I would suggest that, you know, tomorrow, uh, whatever day you can, you get in to see Mr. Brown, because he's been our building inspector for a number of years, he has technical.
He's not there tomorrow?
Mr. Brown is on vacation.
Mr. Brown is on vacation, when's Mr. Brown coming back, gentlemen, what would be his anticipated return date?
Potential Monday.
Monday, so here's the, so he retired, but he's back per diem, and, until there's a new building inspector, so I suggest it.
Yeah.
See him, if you already started with him.
Yeah. There's a couple of things that we can add to.
And, and I, I wrote notes, so it's to check on the twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
The heights on the plan, you wanna stand.
That's what I had to, yeah.
Um, you just want the consistency, check the back, at which one.
Yeah, I wrote that too, yeah, snapshots.
He's gonna, he's gonna need your, your plans to make his finding, though, on those.
Absolutely, yeah, it's, they, they approve plans, the stamped plans.
Whatever he would rely on. So, okay. So would that be agreeable to you, that date?
Yeah.
Would you agree to waive the time constraints?
Should we, should we add to that, this Mr. Chair's?
Should we, should we add to that, this Mr. Chair's some, addressing some light stormwater?
I thought we did.
As you were, as you were recapping the list, I just wanted-
I did not, no.
Yeah, 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 we'll, we'll make sure that we have obviously a builder that accompanies to this meeting, 'cause I mean, I'm not a genius at all in regards to stormwater drainage.
Amen.
Do you have, and if you, you know, if you're willing to sign with time waiver form, um, you'll continue it to get that done. And then, well, if we're able to schedule one early meeting that works for you, we'll have Merrill reach out to you.
That works.
And if not, then that'll be the day.
Okay, absolutely.
Because, yeah, the second Tuesday is town meeting, that's what I'm about to do.
June fourteen, yeah.
Right, okay.
We have a motion to continue to June twenty eighth, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, subject to those enumerated conditions, right?
Yes, subject to the conditions that we'll get it under, whatever, and the meeting itself.
Okay, for the second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, stands continue.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
That's just sure, uh, the time waiver change, it's all right.
I'm sorry, what?
You could tell, I get that back there.
You'll get another letter, so, as of right now, it is the, the posted June meeting date. And then if, if that changes, we'll, we'll make sure Merrill reaches out to you to tell you.
If, if they do have to re-advertise for the twenty five percent, do they have to re-notice certified mail?
Yeah.
So that, so, so you may get another letter if this project is an increase in gross living area of more than twenty five percent, you will get another letter.
Yes.
But otherwise, you will not, June twenty eighth is the date.
Yes, exactly. You're welcome, thanks for coming.
Good luck.
So be, be on the lookout, ten cutaway, in terms of who might sign for your mail. All right, next on the agenda is really just the miscellaneous communications that have come in, you guys can read through those. As to various matters, and then- Next would be discussions, you know, on the, the town warrant, articles one through twenty nine. I don't know, Mr. Koch was interested in having a discussion?
I am, I am, Mr. Chair, and the, the reason that I brought this up, everybody, is because I, I noticed in the newspaper, the, the Citizen, I think on the twenty first or the twenty third of the month, that, you know, there, there are projects proposed on Osgood Street, residential development, and the reporter in the, excuse me, everybody, there's a public meeting going on all, if you could take conversations outside, that would be terrific. I'd appreciate your cooperation in that regard.
It's okay, hold on, hold on, it's okay, I'll take that, it's okay. Well, we'll wait, it's okay, we'll wait. No, it's okay, we'll wait, we'll wait, we'll wait, thanks for coming.
I was too subtle, Mr. Chair.
You know.
I, so, Ellen was quiet, so I had to-
Yes.
Expend some of that energy.
It's okay.
So the, what I got exercised about, Mr. Chair, was I noticed in the, in the newspaper that there's an, an effort, and there's a, a Citizen's petition, which was, one of the warrants, to streamline the, the zoning, the, the, actually, the, the review of, of projects in the area around the Osgood, actually, south, north, south of the Osgood. And I don't even remember the addresses, but everybody knows what they are, they're the five or six aluminum halto signs.
You're talking about-
Up by Barker Farm.
It's Fajetta Farm property?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Yep.
You're talking about article sixteen, right?
Article, yep.
Article eleven.
And I, I didn't get into, I didn't get into the, the warrants too deeply, Mr. Chair, and I was mostly reactionary, for the record, because I couldn't, couldn't help but notice the article characterized an effort to streamline zoning in the area, which I think there is nobody at this table and probably nobody in town that would react negatively to an effort to streamline approvals in town, and try to get people, get people shovels in the ground sooner, get projects productive and occupied sooner.
Unless you like zoning.
Unless, unless you like zoning.
Unless you like the chairman and you like zoning.
We, we can, we can like zoning and, and still appreciate an efficient review, review of things. Uh, but what I, what I struggled with in reading that article was the characterization that the, the way that zoning was going to be streamlined for this project was essentially to leave it up to the planning board and to remove the zoning board from the process apparently in its entirety, which raised, raised my concerns, and there were, I was not the only one concerned, because the article itself said, you know, that there's, there's a process for things and the review by two boards is a more thorough review than, than just one. So, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to streamlining zoning, what I would like to bring up to the board in the event that you didn't read the warrants or didn't appreciate the impact of the warrants, or you didn't notice the article in the newspaper, was that the Citizen's petition by Attorney Smolak, who comes before this board with some regularity.
Yep.
Is seeking to remove the zoning board from a permitting process, and that's, that's, on its face, it feels objectionable to me, but I'm happy to be educated, unfortunately, there was nobody that, that came to me, and they certainly don't have to come to me, but I believe that, that somebody should've approached the chair to say that this was coming down the pike. I would've expected Attorney Smolak, who has been before this board and has had no shortage of experience in town, to have said something to the zoning board of appeals, and I would've, I perhaps hoped that there were, there would be other bodies that would've advanced the issue to the zoning board of appeals in this regard.
I can tell you what I know.
They didn't, and as far as I know, they didn't approach anybody, and so, here I am, sitting here relatively uninformed.
Yeah.
Because nobody's letting me know what's going on, but if you, if you know anything, Mr. Chair, I am all ears.
Well, I'm happy, I'm happy to share what, what I know, and I, I just, by way of history, you know, as part of our institutional memory, I think, Alan and I, you know, Board of Appeals doesn't often take up the warrant articles, we do from time to time, I think we did.
Just once.
I think we did once on the Osgood overlay district back in oh seven, vote recommendations at town meeting. And, you know, typically, you know, when I, it's the planning board that tends to do that, they're the ones that, that propose a lot of the zoning changes. And I, I think it's fair to say over the years, you know, we've seen maybe a, a steady erosion with the new, some of the new permitting that's come down the pike, away from the Board of Appeals with the transfer over to the planning board. So, you know, I, I was happy to put it on the agenda tonight, so we could have a, have a discussion about it. To my knowledge, no, nothing has come to me, and I just wanna also say, you know, I, I don't wanna prejudice a, any particular petition that may show up before us either, so I wanna be careful in the context in which we have a discussion where it's somewhat particular. So there's been nothing filed, I'm not aware of anything from the town level as it relates to the, the article that you mentioned. You know, nothing's come, come to me through community development, through the building inspector, or planning, or even that regard. Whatever I get, you guys, you know, in terms of the distributions through Merrill. I do, you know, I did see the article in the paper, you know, and, you know, I, I think that's how I found out about it too. Um, I did have occasion to, after that, you know, talk to Attorney Smolak, because he is the petitioner, and I know he did wanna come tonight. And I made sure, I told him that we're gonna put it on the agenda. But the planning board is also meeting tonight, and where the, the board that tends to make the recommendation, I think, went to the planning board meeting.
Yep.
As opposed to, to coming here. So, you know, I did ask him to sort of give me a little overview as it related to what was being proposed, and I really haven't delved into it because there's nothing before us, you know, so I haven't seen any plans, I don't know the context in which it's being offered or framed, you know, I, I, you know, it's kinda like trying to decide, operating in the vacuum somewhat. But, you know, generally, it sounded like that there was some sort of concurrent jurisdiction between planning and zoning as to who had the special, the special permit authority for, to one part of a hypothetical project that may be proposed, you know, the mixed use side, and then another part as it related to maybe a residential side, because the way the bylaw reads, you know, if it doesn't designate the special permit authority, it defaults to the Board of Appeals, that's something that's in the bylaw. So there's that special permitting aspect, which, which board would have the special permit authority, as of right now, the way it's written, it's two. Um, and it sounds like that is something that he, on behalf of the applicant, whoever that may be, wanted to streamline to have one special permit authority.
Are they taking it away from conservation as well and have it all go through planning?
I don't know, I don't wanna speak for John, I'm just telling you generally what I know. And then the other aspect of what I know was that, um-
They wanna really streamline it.
Well, you know, it sounded like it, it would change some, some dimensional or height setback, so that, that would effectively remove the Board of Appeals as it related to variances, you know, if there was a variance request. So, that's all I really know about it, like I said, there's, I don't wanna get into the context, I mean, I've, I don't know why over, as, over the years the planning board wants to erode the Board of Appeals' special permit authority with everything they propose, but it seems to happen. You know, I think we voted against the overlay district, right, back in ten, back for, in oh seven?
You and I, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, some might say we're visionaries because we predicted the conflicts that would come up with that, and next thing you knew, we had-
Conflict.
We had conflicts that would, that this board by statute had to resolve. So, um, you know, I mean, I think having two boards in the process generally is a good thing. I think it, it's, 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 it's more than one set of eyes, it's two different approaches. The standards of review are different, the special permit standard of review is certainly different than the variance standard of review. That's all I know, at this point.
Well, here's my take on it, when there is, I, I, for me personally, when a warrant goes to town and it's project specific, it just really aggravates me that that warrant is project specific, it just fought that Fajetta Farm property, that's it. And because this is article sixteen on the second night.
They may not own it anymore, though, I don't know if they, I don't know if they still own it.
Well, that's what it's referred to, Fajetta Farm, I don't even know if they own it or not, but that's where the site is, and everyone in town knows that property as that, whether it's a farm or not, whatever, whatever, but that's where it's gonna be. It may pass because maybe five people are gonna show up on the second night in the, in the third hour of the fifth moon. I mean, that's some, for me, sometimes that happens, and I, I just, it aggravates me that warrants are project specific.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly think, you know, as it relates to zoning over the years, we have certainly been trying to, you know, take, take a, you know, at least a relevant role.
No, but we gave them, we gave them, they wanted cell towers.
But I, you know, years ago, when it related to the, the R four district, converting the two families, that was something the planning board did fix, instead of converting to two families, allowing the in-law suites in the R four district. You know, we raised that as a board, sent it over to planning, and, you know, we could certainly try to take a more proactive approach in this stuff, if that's what the board wants to do, um, over the years, I think we're a highly competent, very diverse board, I think everybody here has a lot of skills and, and applies them to the facts that come before us. So, as it relates to our abilities to either issue a special permit or hear requests for variance, I mean, I think we're as qualified as any board, you know, so, but it's not a town-sponsored petition, it is a citizen petition. I don't know why that is either, I don't really have any.
Because they have the right to.
So, you know, I know Attorney Smolak did, did wanna come, but I, he did say he was going, he had to go to the planning first, and, you know, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, but can I say something, Ellen, to address your concern, and I fully understand on the second night of town meeting, with the fourth hour of the second moon, and however you phrased it, but couldn't the town moderator take things out of order?
Absolutely.
You can move to take things out of order.
You can request it, yes.
Okay, so we could-
The town meeting, I remember, used to be the wild west.
Somebody could move to, to take article sixteen and put it up the ladder, so that the larger amount of people would have a chance to vote on it, instead of, quote, as you described, today select few, that they would pack the meeting.
I'm hard pressed to think they wouldn't get to this the first night, quite candidly.
I, I think they're gonna get through a lot of this the first night.
It could be, be taken out of order.
Sure?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what generally happens.
So that doesn't happen as you just described.
The beautiful thing about town meetings is-
But it doesn't involve school.
They're still our legislative body, you know, you know, they still, so it, it's always been a fun experience over the years, for as long as I've been going. Some meetings have been more interesting than others.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, um, but, yeah.
To, 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 to build on El- Ellen's point a little bit, maybe take a little bit different direction, the, you know, a, a distaste for project-specific warrants, which I'm, I'm not gonna suggest that I have an appetite for them, but as, as Al indicated, Citizen's petition, everybody's got a right to do those, so I'm, I'm certainly not gonna begrudge anybody for undertaking their, their civic rights. Um, what, what troubles me is that there is, there didn't appear to be, in, in my eyes, there didn't appear to be an effort to educate or to find consensus, or even to merely inform this board that something of not, that's not insignificant to the board.
Sure.
Was being changed and, and in many ways eliminated. And a, a characterization of this as streamlining zoning is, is, appears euphemistic to me. This is, this isn't streamlining zoning, this is eliminating, uh, a competent board's efforts to serve the town and, and town meeting, town meeting members, residents, businesses, so that's, that's similarly troubling to me.
I think it's well put, because streamlining is not necess, you know, what streamlining effectively says is, well, there's various ways to look at it, but the way I view it is, the, you know, the residents of this town are really the backbone, because they serve on the various boards, and it's not just us, it's all the other boards in town, and, you know, whenever that, whenever that role gets eroded, whether it be at the selectman level, or the appeals level, the planning level, and, you know, what, what you're really doing is taking away, you know, the confidence in, 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 in the, in the boards to, as residents, to, to apply the laws to the facts and, and in the community that they live in, you know, I mean, we're the ones with the vested interest.
Paul used the right word, the right word was eliminate.
Well, that's what it says.
That was a good word, Paul.
That's what it says.
Eliminate, yeah.
That's, nonetheless, what I did wanna do, I want to dovetail that into addressing Ellen's concern. Whenever, whenever these kind of project-specific or, uh, warrants come up, myself as, as an attendant at town meeting, I'm always suspicious of them, Ellen, and I'm, I'm sure that that's shared by no shortage of other people at town meeting. So, to, to the extent that something like this is going to sail through, I would doubt it. I would certainly probably plan on saying something at town meeting if, if the need were there. But certainly, certainly my suspicions are raised, I imagine that educated, town meeting members tend to be educated about this stuff. So my expectations, they'll be suspicious as well, and seek more than, more than a, a good explanation for what it is, they're gonna seek more than that.
I mean, my general, you know, what I see is, you know, that, that land's been vacant for a while, right? It, it has a particular zone, I don't know if it's BI, you know, you have specific uses that are allowed within the BI, or if, if that's B two, or, you know, whatever the zone is, I don't recall. So, you know, the process exists, you know, the permitting process exists, so why wouldn't you just start it? You know, I don't really, I don't really know what's going, you know, I don't even wanna try to figure it out, because I don't know what difference it makes. I, you know, I think, I think our appeals record is better than the planning boards, but that's, uh, I think, I think we treat people well, but, you know, you can't change the facts, and that's what's before us, so. You know, I listed all the, all the, made sure all the articles were, were listed, so you could talk about whatever you wanted, or take whatever action you wanted. So, but I think it's good to talk about it, I, I do wish, you know, the, the board had, had a more active role year after year, you know.
We've tried.
From January to May, and this sort of stuff, but it just never seems to happen, you know? And, I mean, we've been on for a long time, I've been doing it since oh four. I don't know why that is, maybe this'll be the year that things would change.
The Cubs are gonna take the series, too.
Maybe the Cubs do, the Suns are going all the way, so.
Don't bet against that one, Paul.
I mean, did you wanna take some kind of action tonight, Nicole, is that, did you wanna make a recommendation? Were you looking for a vote, or just a, just a discussion?
I think my, my intention in asking for this to come onto an agenda was merely to, to raise the issue, to make sure that everybody on the board knew to the extent that there are throngs in TV land that are paying attention to this and have an interest, and want, want your interest to be raised as well.
Sure.
To the extent there is an appetite for the board to do something official, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to something like that, I don't have anything in mind. Is it really, is it just a, a letter to the, to the moderator to be read into the record? Is it a letter to the, the, the selectmen, the planning board, to the, to the citizen petitioner? I, I, I'm open to ideas, just because I do not come to you with a plan.
I think our board can recommend favorable or unfavorable action, like, like any, like any board can, as it relates to town meeting. We're not a major player as it relates to town meeting, but we are named, so you can, you can make any recommendation you want, favorable or unfavorable, that can get communicated. So, you can, you can make any re- recommendation you want, favorable or unfavorable, that can get communicated, um, to the moderator or to the citizens. Um, or you can, you can take no action. I mean, what makes me a little bit nervous about this one is it's somewhat project-specific. And, you know, I don't wanna give the appearance of prejudicing a, a project that may ultimately come before us when it is the town meeting legislative forum. So, I mean, I think we're well within our role to, uh, to do that sort of thing if you wanted to. Um, or, but maybe, that maybe a general discussion is enough, and then if you wanna get up as a citizen and talk at town meeting, you can certainly get up as a citizen.
I, I think one of the, one of the things I would do first is to, um, probably challenge your assertion that we're named 'cause I don't see us in.
We are not.
Addendum B, so there's.
Challenge my assertion that we're named?
Yeah.
Well, is it not to eliminate the Board of Appeals?
Oh, I, I see. I'm, I'm talking about the warrants. I thought you were talking about the warrants, not the article.
No, let's just talk about Article sixteen, right?
No, not Article sixteen.
We've actually made recommendations before and they were kinda, um, not heard, um, you know, because as a board, the zoning board, you know, they've changed the bylaws and some of them have been good, you know, some of them have been not good and, and they've changed it the next year. But as a board, we've made recommendations. They were kinda used as recycle.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, you, you know, in part, in fairness to the process, you know, it's, it's not our major role. You know, we hear appeals, we hear people that come in when the bylaw is some, some applied and creates a hardship and is applied somewhat arbitrarily, right? We, we deal with those facts. And the variance, as it relates to special permits, I mean, that's different. You know, we are the default special permit board unless, you know, as, as it gets amended over the years, they tend to define who that goes. I mean, I don't think there's any harm in making a recommendation if you want. Board of Appeals voted to stay and, and to recommend favorable action or unfavorable action. I don't think there's anything, um, inappropriate about that. But I, you know, I, I don't know if it's necess, if it's necessary or not. Maybe a gen, a general discussion is enough. You know, I'm here to let you have the discussion in the forum and try to facilitate that.
We're gonna find the twenty-five percent of the, of the CVA.
Yeah.
What?
You know, I'm not particularly hap, I'm not particularly happy with what I read about town council, quite candidly, in the selectman's budget.
Oh.
It's CVA, it's not, it's not.
I mean, the town manager's proposed budget. I mean, to me, the numbers that I've looked at there, it seems to be double the cost. Um, to me, that's release, that's fire, that's a school teacher. We have a highly educated and experienced firm. We've been dealing with, that's less money.
That's correct.
Um, you know, through, through the fiscal years that I've seen, um, that's been recorded.
No, that's, that's area, that is, there's bylaws.
And, uh, you know, is willing to spend time, uh, in town hall, uh, you know, a couple hours a week to be accessible. Uh, and, and, you know, I question whether or not it's even, uh, you know, in erosion of the charter where it's, it's the selectman's authority to appoint town council. We deal with town council quite often. Nobody's asked my opinion on this one either. Um, and then it converts to a bylaw employee uh, under the, the jurisdiction of controlling the manager effectively. So, you know, I, I don't know.
I don't know if that's it, you know?
You know, I think that creates a, you know, a bit of a conflict in terms of getting opinions and so forth, uh, and, you know, no one's gonna write an opinion that goes against the person that they work for, that I know. And I think the process that I've been dealing with with the years has been very well-run. The town council's been very responsive.
You said he can have a couple of schools.
Has been a huge asset for us since I've served on this board since oh-four. I don't really understand it, particularly because it appears to be double the cost when you look at it. But, you know, that's, that's out there, too.
You, you're more educated on the specifics of how, uh, how the, the town council and personnel operates within, within the town. But what I can offer to the, to the rest of the board and, like, again, the, the grand audience out in TV land is that I am an in-house counsel myself. And the, the company that I work for, uh, was, prior to my joining them, they were entirely reliant on outside counsel. And that comes, that comes at a cost, in the same way that there's, there's an outside counsel cost to the town. It was not the expectation of my employers that by bringing in outs, bringing in in-house counsel in, that I would entirely displace outside counsel. There's always that hope that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna have the cost of things. You're not gonna need outside counsel, um, as much or at all. The practical reality is that, uh, we need just as much from outside counsel, almost just as much as we did before I came on board. So, the, the value add for my role as an in-house counsel to, to a, a firm company is much more in service. The availability and the quick turnaround. And there is some expense on an hourly basis where there are savings. Uh, but the relationship with all of our outside councils remains strong. The billings may have been chiseled, you know, a little bit, but certainly there's nothing dramatic about the, the cost savings associated with converting from outside in-house counsel.
I can appreciate that. I mean, but we're, we're in a municipal forum, you know, so we have a town charter. You know, we have appointments. I mean, I've seen the costs of, of, you know, through the discussions with the selectmen, uh, that I talked to. And, uh, it seems that our, our, our town council is, its budget is, is substantially less than what's being proposed to have this actual budget numbers right now in terms of what's being proposed for this in-house. And then you sorta have that, you know, what I consider to be an erosion of the charter. So, um, I don't really understand all these decisions. Like I said, that nothing's, you know, I, we've, we've, Ellen and I and this board over the years have dealt with, uh, at, at the land use level, you know, it, it, quite often. Um, and the level of service we get is outstanding. Um, I think.
When we're allowed access.
You know, we've, we've always been allowed access. I mean, I, you know, rec- recently, there's been some restrictions, but it's, the numbers is certainly less than what's being proposed in the budget. And I, if we're gonna look at it from a budgetary perspective, I don't get it. But that's where we are on that. Are, are there any other, are there any other warrant articles you guys wanna discuss or?
I didn't, I didn't come to the meeting with any others.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see.
Did you wanna discuss any?
Any other zoning articles?
No.
Which is not, to the, to the extent it's unclear, that doesn't mean that I tacitly, you know, approve or I tacitly embrace
Right, I mean.
other, other articles.
I hope you can all make it. Did you wanna take, make any recommendations, Paul? Just wanna.
If it's, you know, I'll, I'll borrow, I'll borrow one of your techniques. If it's the will of the body, I, I'd certainly, I wouldn't shy away from some kind of a recommendation with marginal explanation perhaps, if that's a, a package. So, I may go up and down the table and say, you know, does, does anybody think that's a bad idea? Does anybody think that's a good idea? Does anyone just wanna shrug their shoulders and say, leave me out of it? That's, all, all of those are rational responses.
I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. I just question whether it'll actually make a difference of any kind.
I, I don't, I wouldn't disagree with you. I don't think there's anybody sitting at the table that would disagree that we have no idea how it will be received, if, if received at all. Could, could be received and head right to the recycle bin. And that's certainly, that's nothing that, that we can control. But at, at a minimum, uh, I, I think, I think that, uh, somebody saw fit to appoint us to a zoning and, uh, a zoning interpretive and judicial, for lack of a better term, body, uh, which means that somebody thought that each of us had something to contribute to the planning and permitting land use process. And now I have somebody, another voice somewhere saying, no, Paul, 'cause I guess I am gonna take it personally. No, Paul, you don't have a voice in permitting and land use. And that's, if, again, if that's the will of the appointing persons, by all means, I serve at their pleasure. But for heaven's sakes, I, I, I would like to have heard about it in advance. Again, I serve at someone else's pleasure. And the, the most I can do, if the most I can do is vote a yes and say, Al, would you please write a letter that says, uh, the board is recommending disapproval of this article? Then that's, that's what I can do 'cause I'm, 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 I'm not gonna sit here and organize a picket. I'm not gonna organize a movement. I'm not even gonna make a dozen telephone calls. I'm just a, I'm a citizen soldier that shows up on the second Tuesday of the month to try to contribute to the community. That's all.
Paul, if this were to pass, chances are we would be the only community in the Commonwealth of Mass that the zoning board wasn't needing, needed?
Well, I, I don't, I don't think it's like that. I think it's just as it relates to.
I mean, we would be the exception to the rule.
No, no, no.
Not, not entirely.
No, I think it's just this particular.
You know, it starts, you know, they start a little bit, you grab here, then they grab a little bit more, you take one bite, then you take another bite, and then there's another bite.
There is, there is that theme. I, I absolutely agree that there, there is that theme and that's something that, that boards and bodies ordinarily have to fight on a daily, monthly, annual basis. So, I'm, I'm not necessarily railing against that. I, uh, and I don't wanna make too big an issue out of it 'cause I don't think that this is cutting the zoning board out of everything. It's not stripping all the powers. It's kind of a project-specific, there's a concurrent jurisdiction problem, which has been confusing for everybody. We've talked about this in the past, this concurrent jurisdictional stuff, and would love to have had a solution, um, uh, formulated, advanced and implemented. Unfortunately, that hasn't necessarily come and that organically, as far as, you know, town machinations go. So, what we have here is a citizen's petition that says, you know what, if the town hasn't approached this with a solution, let me approach it with a solution and, and perhaps see what happens. Maybe it makes this project easier. Maybe it brings a more holistic change and concurrent jurisdiction is managed more thoroughly in the bylaw. Maybe that's the result. Maybe the citizen's petition is designed to start a conversation more than it is to say, you know what, Article sixteen, let's get it passed and get it done. It could be, let's get the town to do something about this. And in that regard, I would be all ears. And I think all of us would be. We'd likely have something relevant to say, probably something important to say as one of the land use committees in town.
I, you know, I think the concurrent jurisdiction was with respect to the special permitting. I still think there is the, the dimensional aspect.
Yep.
That's the variance component, which, you know, would get lumped into, so that's sort of something that, that would be different. Because, you know, there wouldn't be the need to request for any kind of relief. They would either comply or either through the special permit. So, whatever you folks wanna do, I mean, I'll certainly.
And, and the, the, again, I guess the trou, one, one of the troubling things is, so the, a choice was made to eliminate the zoning board from it where that feels a little less precedent. And we, uh, the, many of us sat through a year and a half of hearings on the forty-B, which the great and good Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a state level, that our, our general court and our governor signed legislation that said, you know what? We're actually gonna centralize land use and permitting authorities with the zoning board for a project of this magnitude and the size, of these forty-B projects. Whereas the citizen's petition, citizen's petition turns that on its head, which is not to say the forty-B is the greatest thing on earth. I'm not suggesting it's the best thing since sliced bread. It's just a tool that somebody influenced a long time ago. And the precedent that I'm using it for is just that if we have land use authorities that need to be centralized, they put it in the zoning board and not the planning board. Again, I'm not offended in that regard that somebody chose the planning board 'cause there very well may be a good reason. Nobody's told me what that reason is, and so therefore I sit here looking at it with a jaundiced eye.
So, you may, is it fair to say you may feel differently if it was a town-sponsored petition as opposed to a citizen-sponsored petition?
I would, well, I think, as I already confessed, I come to it suspicious whenever it's, whenever it's project-specific, much like Ellen has mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
Would I, I would have an expectation that if this were a town-sponsored arti, if this were a town-sponsored article, then, uh, it would be my expectation that somebody would have at least put it, put it before me, said, hey, at, at least said, hey, Paul, hey, no, actually, they would've said, hey, Al, can you show this to, to the board members? At least gotten a heads up instead of relying on the citizen to tell me what's going on.
Sure. Can we be on your agenda? So, I, you know, and, and like I said, Mr. Smolak was the one that wanted to come, um, but he, you know, when we told him, made sure he knew what was going on, 'cause I made sure that he knew, just to be fair.
Yep. I, I, I appreciate you reaching out to him. I considered reaching out as well, and I probably would've been a better person if I had reached out. Uh, but lea, leaving that stuff kind of, kind of to the chair.
It's part of the job. I look at it as part of the job.
And if some, generally speaking, if somebody is unable to appear before the board, they'll at least send a note, maybe an email to be read into the record, a letter. There would be some, there would be some way of addressing the issue or introducing the issue.
Well, I mean, the only other, I mean, the only other thing you could do is if, you, you, we, we could call a special meeting between now and town meeting if you wanted to address this and, and invite Attorney Smolak to come in, um, or, you know, just leave, we'll leave all the warrant articles on if you wanted or just Attorney Smolak's or whatever. Um, you could even meet, we could even meet the day of town meeting. I don't know why we couldn't. Um, I think everybody else does.
I appreciate that as an option. I think that's, that's terrific out-of-the-box thinking.
Yeah.
And, and trying to get something done in the interim. And where, where I'm coming from, and this is not necessarily to make a mountain out of a molehill.
All right.
It's, it's not to, uh, you know, up in the apple cart and change everything. It, it mostly was coming to just raise awareness on, on the board level.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I, I shared your thoughts, you know, when I read the article, it didn't make a lot of sense to me, but, you know, okay, yes.
Yeah. Okay, but I've, I've been fretting on and on. If anybody else has something else to say, I, I, I'd love to hear it. If not, then I'm happy to stop being below heart and, and get the, get the meeting closed.
I think it's irrelevant. I think it's an important contact, discussion. I mean, you know, certainly in the right context. I mean, you know, it's, you know, I feel like it's part of what we ought to be discussing, you know? If the process isn't free-flowing, then, you know, we discuss it. So, I think it's great. Um, you know, we all have different ways we approach these things, so, I mean, I'll, whatever you guys wanna do, just tell me.
Just to, just to do a quick poll, start, starting at that, because Alexandria had indicated not, not necessarily opposed to it, not, not certain that it's.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't get my hopes up of it making an indent anywhere.
They.
But there's no harm in trying.
Seconded. Seconded.
I think it's a good idea, Paul. I, I think we should do something.
If we don't do anything, we can't complain later anyway.
That, that's right. I agree with you.
I'm just.
I've reserved the right to complain.
No, I think you're right, and I think we should make some kind of statement. It would be nice if it was a unanimous statement, but let the chips fall where they may.
Ellen, any thoughts?
About this.
Yeah.
Um, no. Um, actually, I think a letter would do good. And, and like you said, if we, if we don't do it, then who do we have to blame?
All right.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly on, on board. Denny?
I, uh, I'm on board with the letter. I think it would be beneficial to hear from Attorney Smolak prior to taking that action. But if that's not able to happen, then we'll just move forward.
I, I, I hear you on that. And what I was, what I was thinking, and I imagine this is the way Al would pen it anyway, without, without knowing more about the article, we're voting, you know, we're not in favor of the, of the warrant article.
Yeah.
Which leaves the door open for, if there's, if there are educational, if there's an educational effort, then by all means, I'd give that, our recommendation would change.
Yeah, I mean, completing, agreeing with that.
I mean, I, I would wanna give him the opportunity to come in and talk about his warrant article before we made a recommendation one way or the other. I, I'm not opposed to holding a, a special meeting just for the purposes of discussing the zoning article. And, uh, between now.
Can we get that done within a week?
Sure we can. Just call the meeting. You know, you call the meeting, you post it, and, uh, we identify our room and we have the meeting.
Just undo it Saturday. It's the Kentucky Derby.
Yeah, right, naturally. I mean, I don't wanna do it during my baseball games either, but I mean, um.
Mother's Day's good.
Mother's Day would be.
But we're not talking something along.
I recall Tom Rabel's having to work on Mother's Day during, uh, the, the Ozzy Overlay District.
Really? Really?
Yes, yes. Okay, um, you know, I mean, we, Monday, we could try to set it up for Monday, um, if you want. And we could just table the matter to, uh, a special meeting for Monday. I don't know what this, what the planning board's doing tonight.
It depends, it also depends on Attorney Smolak's schedule, so you can't really.
No, we could give him an opportunity.
Right.
We can, we could schedule a special meeting and give him an opportunity.
Be here at, at Monday at seven-thirty?
Yeah.
I mean, that's it?
Yeah, well.
If that doesn't work, give us another time between now.
We have Monday and Tuesday, right? Three in reality.
I mean, you don't really have much time on Tuesday.
I, I don't have Tuesday, unfortunately.
I, I, I can't do Tuesday, Ellen. If a town meeting is that night.
Well, tonight's Tuesday, so what nights would, would work?
Because it's town meeting at.
That's town meeting next week.
Yeah, next Tuesday.
So, next Tuesday's shot.
I need to eat dinner before I go out.
So, yeah, the selectmen and the planning board, I think, hold public hearings prior to town meeting.
Un- understood. I ca, I can't. That's, Tuesday is shot for me.
Okay, so.
So, that, that's not dispositive. That doesn't say, don't hold it.
How is Monday?
What night, what night do you wanna propose it?
Well, I.
'Cause I'd like to know what action the planning board takes tonight, if any. You know, I don't.
They, they don't have to declare their action until town meeting.
That's true, they don't.
So, they can table it and wait until.
They don't have to take any action either.
Yeah, until town meeting and then decide then, which I can guarantee you that's what, it's gonna happen.
So, I, I mean, fr- frankly, Al, I, I.
It's just a suggestion.
I, I, I appreciate the suggestion. I'm, I'm not implying to move heaven and earth to try to give Attorney Smolak a chance to convince me that this is a good idea when we have had no shortage of days, uh, this calendar year and to have heard something in advance.
Well, we, well, we haven't met in the past two months, so.
We haven't. If something had come up on the agenda, I imagine we, we would've met.
Yes, we would've.
And I imagine a warrant, the discussion of a warrant article or two certainly would've caught your attention and we would not have canceled March's meeting as a, for instance.
I think that's a fair assessment.
I think that's a fair assessment. I try not to call you guys out for, just to say hi.
You don't miss us ever?
I do, I do, but then it, you know. Uh, all right, so, uh, we, you don't wanna have a special meeting, is that what I'm hearing?
It's it's not that I don't want to. I don't object to it. I'm just not willing to u- u- upend everything about my next week. 'Cause our our weeks, I'm gonna speak only for myself. My weeks are calendared.
Yep.
Like with with kid, much like I suspect that yours is. We all, we all have jobs, many of us have children.
Very much so, yeah.
Many of us have other community commitments, so squeezing squeezing another meeting in while a while a noble, and I think would be extraordinarily helpful, uh, effort.
Yep.
It's just not something I can do.
Are we able to do an email response from him that can be sent out, that's less time-consuming?
Well, y- you know, we have to, we would have to hold a public meeting, you know, if we were gonna take any any action. You know, we would have to be, you know, pursuant to the open meeting law.
I prob- I think what what she's asking is, what if Attorney Smolak just sent everybody an email saying what this what this was and where where it's coming from and why it's happening, perhaps get an explanation. Doesn't necessarily mean we take an official action, because if we're voting to take an official action, it's tonight to, uh, you know, to to be not in support of the warrant article. That would be the letter that you'd send. So, I don't imagine there's an official action being taken by reading some collateral from the citizen petitioner, but I could be wrong about that.
Well, I mean, you, you can move for whatever you'd like that's reasonable. I mean, you couldn't deliberate it unless we're meeting again, so, um.
Nope. Nope. That's what I was hearing you ask for anyway, just just for, just for Attorney Smolak to push through some information as to what this is all about. Not necessarily to engage in a conversation or debate with Attorney Smolak, certainly not to engage in conversation or debate among the board members.
No. A little more info.
Okay, well, you know, I I, uh, I can't, I can't make motions, so if you, if you, if you wanna move for something.
Then shall I? Yeah. So, shall I make a a motion, um, I'm not even sure exactly how to, uh, how to phrase it, because this is not something that we ordinarily do.
My recommendation.
Contemplated, but a motion.
Can I ask the legality of that, though, having him send the board as a whole?
Well, I.
I don't think, I don't think it's sending a nec- I don't think it's, I mean, I think.
He's not on a, well, I guess he's on.
Well, I think what we learned a couple of months ago, back in January, when, uh, the town town manager came in and and expressed some disdain for the communication method that Al had taken, uh, that it was taken without without board action, sent on, sent on Town of North End over ZVA letterhead.
You know, I like to, well, can we, you know, that's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda, but what I'm doing is being, trying to be responsive to the town manager and trying to be responsive to what the board's needs.
And we're not gonna. Well, I don't work for the town manager. And neither do you.
Right, but they're, but they're, hi- his argument, his argument's colorable at a minimum, Al.
You're appointed by the board of selectmen. His argument is is subjective.
But that's, that's what I asked.
But colorable, that's what I said.
But as a board, are we able to ask for this?
The cha- the ru- there are rules or regulations, right? The the chairman handles the day-to-day aspects of of the board. I'm not going to take a position on something unless there's a resolution from the board to do it. I'm not gonna communicate something unless the board, you know, as it relates to town meeting, you know. But in terms of response to a memo, you know, I don't wanna get off topic here, but.
No, no response for, well, let let me finish.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is that the the board, the motion that I'm trying to formulate
Yeah.
is just to authorize the chair to speak for the board by not, by making a recommendation for Article sixteen, uh, as for to be unfavorable action.
I would suggest if if i- if you, if that's something you want to do and you want communicated at the town meeting, you would then move to make favorable or unfavorable action to be reported at town meeting by the chair or chair's designee. You know, so if I can't go and it's somebody else or whatever, whoever is the appointee. But I don't think it would be, but that's, that's substantially different than the other that you brought. But I think that's would be it. Where the board would either be making a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, if you choose to do that. But I, you know, I'm a little concerned, you know, I'm just gonna put my my cautionary tale out there. In in the event that there is an application that comes before us that does stem from that warrant article, I just don't wanna have the perception of a a kind of prejudice towards it one way or the other. So, that's just, you know.
And how would we avoid that perception?
I don't know. Just take no action. You know, and then in the, you know, planners that make those recommendations, um, do it. You know, I, I don't know what the right answer is for you. If you wanna take the position, the board, I believe, my experience is well within, well within its authority to 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 vote it and have it communicated, you know.
I I found an effective way is to actually, as a citizen of the town, go to town meeting, speak, and when you introduce yourself as a member of the zoning board.
Well, you can't.
And a resident. You can actually absolutely say you're a member of the zoning board.
You have, yeah, you would have to disclose it, but quite candidly, if this, if the question came up with the moderator, has the Board of Appeals taken an official position?
They, he doesn't have to ask.
Sometimes people ask these questions. Over the years, people will ask, as, they will ask the moderator to ask whether or not a position has been taken or not. And you would either be answering, yes, it is, and here it is, or no, it isn't, I'm only speaking personally, you know, those sorts of things.
I I find that speaking personally is more effective than sometimes.
Well, that, then it's, it sounds like both of these can be satisfied, 'cause if if we, uh, take a, take a vote to tonight, perhaps I was putting the cart before the horse and talking about writing a communication to all those various offices and and the town moderator, uh, is that we take a, if, perhaps what you're saying is, hey, Paul, we should probably take a vote to, uh, recommend unfavorable action on Article sixteen. Take the vote on Article sixteen for unfavorable action, and then perhaps a vote that says, here, 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 Al, why don't you communicate this? Perhaps the method of communication is that one of us stands up at town meeting and says, the board took a vote on May third, and recommends unfavorable action. So, you get the 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 piece of paper circulated about town, and you get a live voice at town meeting just reporting something that's on public record, which is that the zoning Board of Appeals recommended unfavorable action on Article sixteen.
I mean, I think you, I think you could just do it in one one motion, if that's what your intent is. You could just, you know, to be communicated, whatever, I mean, I think. Either way, I think that it's a, it's a, that's the way you do it. If that's something that you feel strongly about.
I I think we already took a vote that we have the board take a position. I mean, I I already, I thought we had a vote.
Well, I don't, I don't think we've done it. We just, we just kind of explored whether or not it was a good idea, but I can certainly move, uh, to ask the board for a I I I move that the board recommend unfavorable action on Article sixteen of the two thousand sixteen warrants.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Could, can I just ha- didn't we take a vote to have you write a letter?
No, he asked, he was just an informal discussion. There's a motion on the floor for unfavorable action as to sixteen.
No.
Oh. Okay. I'll second it.
There is a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? All right, Paul, how do you vote on that?
Aye, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Alexandria?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the ayes have it. So, then.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I have to vote.
It'd be nice to say unanimous.
So, perhaps then there's, there's no need for a communication, for a, a letter authorizing communication, because the board has already acted.
I could certainly simply communicate it. Um, um.
Would you, would you rather have a vote authorizing communication?
I mean, look, I, it is. I I think it's implied. You know, I think that that was an exercise in futility back in January. So, you know, I don't think there was any weight to the position he was taking whatsoever. Feel free to exercise, I mean, you wanna make a separate vote, that's fine. If it makes you feel good, that's fine.
No, it does, no, it doesn't make me feel good, 'cause a a a vote for unfavorable action on Article sixteen has been taken. And and anybody can report that to the the boards and bodies around town.
All right. Um, fine. So, well, why don't you make it, if you would like me to communicate that to, you would like that communicated to town meeting? The moderator, for for town meeting, to the selectmen, to the planning board.
Yes, I'd like someone to say out loud that the zoning board has recommended unfavorable action on Article sixteen.
Okay.
So, shall I, I move to have the the board by its designee report at town meeting that the zoning board has taken unfavorable action on Article sixteen?
Yes, say, say by its chairman or designee, or his designee.
Then I I move that the chairman or that the that the board by its chairman or chairman's designee report to the town moderator and or town meeting that the zoning Board of Appeals has recommended unfavorable action on Article sixteen of the two thousand sixteen warrants.
All right.
I'll second that.
Paul, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's declared as well. Um, fine, so then we will have that communicated and, um, what else would you guys like to talk about tonight?
I think we still have.
Shannon Law.
Yeah, number five, Ms. Van Ness.
Yeah, we are done with the town article, sir?
Yeah.
Number five in the week, cover that.
Yeah, I covered that.
We did, we covered Shannon Law.
I'll just mention that there was miscellaneous correspondence.
There's the, there's the communications, you guys can read them. They're just really not for discuss, they're just communications that have come in. All right, well, that action will be taken and, um.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Paul, in favor?
Aye.